We'll bring to order the Grand Travis County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for Wednesday, February 1st, 2017. We will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Roll call, Sarah, please.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Gorflette?
Here.
Klaus?
Here.
Crawford?
Here.
I shall laythrup is excused. Yes. We have approval of the minutes. Everybody's had a chance to look over the minutes of January 18th, 2017. Are there any changes? Is everything all good there? Okay, those will stand approved. And we come to our first public comment. Sarah, would you read the rules, please?
Any person shall be permitted to address the meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the Board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may at his or her discretion extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, a public comment will generally be received at any time during the meeting regarding a specific topic currently under discussion by the Board. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized and shall not address the Board until called upon by the chairperson.
Mr. Scheck, step right up, please.
All right, take your time. Thank you very much for this opportunity to address this body this evening. What I had is just a very short little missive from Carroll County Commissioner Richard Rothschild. He's a county commissioner in Carroll County, Maryland. He had, when he was visited by a group of students that asked him about would he recommend young people getting into politics or consider running for office, he responded, unless, no, unless the answer to the following questions, you answered them correctly. First, are they committed to upholding the Constitution? Second, can they handle not being liked? What do you mean, those students asked him? Well, people that are amiable and have a strong need to be liked do not necessarily make good fiscal conservative elected officials. You see, everyone that comes before a governing body inevitably wants money for something what they deem important. Money for social programs, money for infrastructure, money for public safety, money for veterans, money for libraries, money for schools, et cetera. Furthermore, in the world of government, special interests judge you based on whether you, whether or not you support their mission. And unfortunately, support is not measured by principles, nor is it measured by empathy. In the stark world of government, it is measured by dollars. In my, he says, "In my three short years in office," this was like four years ago he said this, "I've witnessed this anomaly in action." Commissioner John Doe, quote, "Commissioner John Doe cares about education. He gives us money. Commissioner John Doe cares about our hard-working employees. He gives us money. Never mind that the increased spending levels today could force us to lay off 50 people next year if revenues fall short. Never mind the fact that salaries increases we give today could force us to raise taxes on struggling taxpayers next year." So here's the rub: People with a compulsive need to be liked do not know how to say no. They inevitably allow spending and the size of government to trend upward. Continuing, he says, "Last year during a debate on funding, I received a revealing email from a teacher. It threatened, 'Commissioner Rothschild, if you want to do what's best for your political career, you'll give us the extra funding we demand.'" Commissioner Rothschild then walked to the podium in front of hundreds of jeering government employees. He read the email aloud and he told the audience, "I am now ready to respond to this email. You see, my job is not to do what is best for my political career. My job is to uphold the Constitution and manage this county in a fiscal responsible manner. And suffice it to say, the reason our country is buried in trillions of dollars of debt and the reason this county is buried in 300 million of debt is because politicians before me made great career decisions."
You can continue.
And I just finished. Thank you.
That's all? You're good? Okay. Anybody else for public comment? There'll be another opportunity later. Move on to approval of the agenda. Does anybody have on the Board anything to add or subtract? Or anybody out there in the public, anything? No. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Johnson, supported by Commissioner Mayor. Any further discussion?
At the end of the meeting, under notices, are we going to make sure everyone knows about our study session coming up?
Okay.
And is that, is that a place where we have an opportunity to just talk about things that aren't on the agenda? Or how do we?
You can bring things up, mention things, not full-on discussions, but to bring things up, possibly for future meetings, things like that.
That would be great.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, so we have an agenda. Consent calendar. Sarah, again.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one Commission motion without discussion. Any member of the Commission, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval, is approved by a single Commission action adopting the consent calendar. All information identified on the consent calendar can be viewed in its entirety at www.grantravers.org. A, receive and file, 9-1-1 minutes of December 8th, 2016. Two, Northern Lakes Community Mental Health minutes of December 15th, 2016. Three, Travers Area District Library minutes of December 15th, 2016. B, approvals. One, 2017 holler licenses. Two, appointments to boards and committees, Boards of, Board of Public Works, Brownfield Development Authority, and Planning Commission.
Okay. Does anybody have anything they'd like removed from the consent calendar for further discussion?
What is B2, actually? We're forming an ad hoc committee, or we have an ad hoc committee and we have appointments to talk about? Or?
They've already been appointed.
They've already been appointed.
There's already appointments recommended in that resolution.
Okay.
Anybody from the staff? Anything? Anybody from the public, like anything removed and discussed further? No? Okay.
Madam Chairman, I've moved to approve the consent calendar as adopted. Support.
So, moved by Commissioner Wheelock, supported by Commissioner Klaus. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on, we have no special orders of business. There's nothing removed from the consent calendar. We have departmental items. Moving right along to the Health Department, starring Wendy.
Hello, Wendy Truitt, Health Officer, Grand Travis County Health Department. So tonight I have before you the supporting administrative documentation as a result of the medical examiner budget that was already approved for three months for 2017. And the documents are a letter of intent, which Chris Forsyth has worked on, reviewed and approved, and negotiated on our behalf. And then our first addendum to the inter-local agreement for the Office of the Medical Examiner that also contains Benzy and Leland counties. And I've already gone to those boards, and they've already approved the inter-local agreement addendum. But the letter intent is strictly with us because we administer the whole program.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are the num, are the dollar figures attached for each county a rough equivalent of deaths per county? Is that how you decided on it?
Well, it's a, it's a twofold way that the inter-local agreement and the budget is set up. The first part is our kind of a set amount, which is prorated based on population and as well as previous kind of cases that occurred in the counties. So it's a combination of those two. And it's, it's the cost of having the core services or essentially staff who are at the ready to respond for all three counties to provide the medical examiner services. So that's what you would have to pay because by statute, we have to have that service. The second part of it, and this is where we get into a little bit more of estimates, is the contractual costs. And those only are billed to any of the three counties if there are actual deaths that result in an autopsy or an external exam and/or toxicology and investigation and transport. It just, you know, depends on the death.
So the monthly, the monthly, the $26,000 or whatever it is, that's basically for generating death certificates?
In part.
I would think that's the primary function. If you're not doing autopsies, which is an extra charge, you're not doing forensic exams, which is an extra charge.
Yeah, it's for, it's for the invest, it's for the scene investig, includes the scene investigations, and it includes reviewing of cremation permits for all three counties because no matter whether, yeah.
I'm not questioning the amount. I'm just, I'm just saying that the core amount, the base fee is because every death that occurs, the medical examiner has to generate a death certificate, correct?
The medical examiner does not generate a death certificate on every single death. Only those deaths that meet the specifications for reporting to the medical examiner's office. And then, depending on the information from the scene or prosecutor's office or law enforcement, then their determination is made whether or not it's a declined jurisdiction or a full-on case.
Okay, so give me, give me a number. For $26,000 a month, how many, how many exams is that person going to be engaging in? So these are suspicious deaths.
Not necessarily. Because the situation is, you know, I, you know, as most of you know, I made ambulance calls for 26, 36 years. A lot of times, we'll go to a home and there's someone, his died. Okay, the paramedics that come on scene have to make sure that everything's good. If there's any question, then the Sheriff's Department comes and they have to review the scene, make sure everything's good. And then a lot of things happen. You can contact the funeral home at the which the parents and the, or the family, and the body can be picked right up at the home and taken care of under one of two circumstances. Either the medical examiner has to sign off to allow that, or the family physician has to sign off. If the person's under the care of a physician, that physician will sign off for that person to be transported one way or the other. And then that physician is responsible to sign the death certificate, not the medical examiner.
Okay, so to go back to my question, for $26,000 a month, how many exams are we going to be having in Grand Travis County that this person, I mean, how many people die in Grand Travis County and how? You know, I'm not, I'm not trying to be an anal-compulsive bean counter. I'm just trying to get a handle on it. Is it 50? Is it 100? Is it 1,000? I mean, $26,000 a month is a fairly significant sum of money when if there was a suspicious death, then there's an autopsy fee of $2,500. There's a site fee of some, you know, some other money. It's like, I'm just trying to figure out per.
All right, so let me, let me address a couple of things. It doesn't necessarily represent the number of exams, so I'm not trying to avoid your question. I'm just trying to figure out how to respond appropriately. And the total of 26 is for all three counties. And I am an anal-compulsive bean counter, just so you know that, so I track a lot.
So we get, we get $8,000 back from the other two counties, so it's, for us, it's about $17,000 that we're paying.
And at least a portion of that cost is to make sure we have people available, well-trained to be able to respond to those scenes with the proper qualifications.
Sure. Yeah, so in Grand Travis County last year, I believe we had about 1300, what's the total number of deaths?
Oh, yeah, about 13, we had 1,303 deaths.
So that's just Grand Travis County.
So that's 100 bucks, 100 a month.
But there's, you know, only a portion of those are what would be in the consideration of medical examiner cases. And then Benzy and Leland counties are much smaller.
Okay, that's good. Don't, 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 you know, don't sweat it.
I have numbers. I'm just trying to figure out how to.
Question of the, of all those deaths, how many of them would have been at Munson Hospital because they come from Leland or Benzy? Or is this based on, is this here based on where they're at, where they live?
Medical examiner jurisdiction is based on the county of death. In our county, about a third of the deaths are non-Grand Travis County residents because we have a large regional health facility. Now, other counties are in that same, Grand Rapids has, you know, the Children's Hospital. Some of it is tourists, accidents, you know, it's not all, it's not all attributable to Munson, but certainly that's.
Okay, but because it's here, it's ours. I mean, because they're here, they're ours. Okay. I'm just curious.
For a death certificate to be filed with the clerk's office, they have to have passed away within the county boundaries. So yes, because we have a medical facility, we're going to have an increased number of those comparatively to the surrounding counties.
But I will tell you that the, the core services, meaning just for us to be, have staff ready and available and be operational and respond to the day-to-day things that we do, is primarily based, the numbers, the proration, on the population. So it is slightly in favor of us a bit, but we also administer everything and, okay? But we also, I also factor in somewhat the number of cases, but it's a, you know, it's a projection.
Right, right. And I, you're in favor, it's my against. But I've got a question, Wendy.
Sure.
The, is, is it a 90-day contract? Is that what we're, is that what it truly is?
Because of the quick transition from Dr. Fliss to kind of the fuller service by Western Michigan, we decided to go with a 90 days so that we could figure some things out during that period of time and completely negotiate a longer-term contract and ensure that all three counties still want to stay in. Because Benzy County has been sort of one foot in, one foot out for about nine months. I told them they need to decide because it affects the other two counties.
Okay. I did notice in doing the math on here, the annual expense, is the annual expense, it's not, it's not 25% when you add it to the bottom number? When you add everything up, that the annual expense is 100% in on the 90-day proposal total? And it, and it should be, if it's 90 days, should be 90 days' worth of the annual expense.
What number are you looking at?
On your, on the page 34, annual expense, Grand Travis County has $1,032. And if you, if you add that to the totals of the 90-day core service and the 90-day contractual service.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Add that up, then you get the 96,000.
I'm sorry, you're, you're looking at the annual expense for the software system where we track and log all of the cases. So that's just a, that's a one-time expense. That's included in the, in the first 90 days.
Okay, so the next 90 days, it won't show up.
No, and I should tell you that because we also were awarded a Health Innovation Grant for Medical Examiner in partnership with Western Michigan, there are some additional costs in here for training of scene investigators. So you can't necessarily take this bottom number and multiply it by four and assume that that's going to be the amount that I come back to you with for a full year. It's probably a little bit higher because we're doing some additional things on the front end, purchasing some telemedicine equipment and things like that.
This is a little higher? This should be higher or the number you come back with?
This will, this should, this will be higher as far as the three-month cost.
All right. Thank you.
Bob, I think we're next.
Yeah, I mean, I know that they signed off on the, what the heck am I thinking of? Cremations. How many of those do we have a year roughly?
For our county, just for last year, we ended up with 932. So that helps support the office because the cremation permit fee last year was 50, but we just, for 17, it went up to 75. But they do, and then Benzy County, it's 40. They said that, their Board does, and they're responsible for receiving it. And Leland County doesn't charge, but that's their.
So over 1,300 deaths, 900 of them were cremated?
Over 900. Usually, yeah, we have a very high cremation rate. It's, it's, every month is between 70 and 80%.
Interesting. Probably not commonly known.
I mean, it seems like a lot of money, but you have to remember, we had such a bargain before. I mean, we really did, and.
And I'm not squawking about the number. I'm just trying.
No, I understand. You're trying to get, understand what it's.
No, yeah, I totally appreciate that. And, and I'm, ask, ask questions. I think I've probably educated this. The other thing I would say is, you know, we just had a Carfentanil death. We were the first of the eight counties that this office serves, and they serve Kalamazoo and Muskegon, who you'd think, based on numbers, might have that happen. But we, you know, had a death attributable to Carfentanil in December of 2016. So we're not immune to kind of all the different kinds of deaths that can scare prosecutors and law enforcement and things like that.
I think it's important to note that Wendy used a lot of time in this, and West Michigan, Western Michigan University has stepped to the table to help us. You know, we, Bob's absolutely right. The work that Dr. Holden did for us for 30 years for nearly nothing, you know, all of a sudden, we have to start paying for. But, but that's, that's a service that we're responsible to take care of. You know, I appreciate the fact that this came together very quickly because we only had, what, six weeks or a month from when Dr. Fliss decided to leave before we had to have something in place. And that's, this was what we came up with. And I do really appreciate their efforts and Western Michigan's efforts to come together with a, with a 90-day trial period to allow all of us to see if this is what we want. You know, we, we may have to tweak it on their end, they may have to tweak it on their end, but at least it gave us an opportunity to have something in place that met all the requirements of what we needed to do moving forward.
Well, and we partnered with them honestly for, since Dr. Holden's passing. They came up and did some free education when we got two new medical examiner and deputy aboard, and we've continued that partnership with some training since. But, and then they became our autopsy provider because we were having some issues with our other where they weren't able to meet the requirements that we needed. They were declining cases we refer, which, so then we had to find somewhere else, and they weren't as responsive in ways that we needed. And so we did make a switch, but when we made that switch, we got input from all three county board, or all three administrators, all three sheriff's departments, law enforcement, and all three prosecutors, and it was unanimous, so.
Madam Chairman, I would move to the Grand Travis County, approve the letter of intent and addendum number one to the interim agreement with Western Michigan University, Homer Stiker, M.D., School of Medicine, to continue to provide medical services for Grand Travis County.
Support.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Wheelock, supported by Commissioner Johnson. Chris, do we need to do that two separate or is one okay?
One's fine.
One's fine? Okay.
The resolution all ahead in one, so I wrote it that way.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, Wendy. Okay, on to old unfinished business. We have amendment to Board Rule 11.6, method of voting. And we were, we had asked our prosecutor attorney to help us figure out some options so that we can make it crystal clear what we want available to us.
Right. So last week, I did put together four options for you. I've labeled them in my memo, A, B, C, and D. The first version of the amendment 11.6 would be what was presented at the Board meeting on the 18th. That is, that you completely ban vote by telephone or by means of video conferencing. Based on the comments, though, I received, my understanding was the Board wanted to explore video conferencing as long as the person who is doing the video conferencing can be clearly seen by the Board and vice versa, in that we, you know, we have the appropriate technology to allow that. So what I've done is I've given you really three alternatives regarding video conferencing. The first would be just a, really a generic, it's allowed. And the second two would be, it would be allowed, but first, the request has to be made to the Board, and then it's voted upon at a prior meeting, and the Board gets to determine whether to allow it or not. And the third would be to direct county administration to put together a proposed policy that would address any concerns that the Board may have, and then that policy then would be permitted, presented to the Board, excuse me, presented to the Board for ratification. I'd be more than happy to talk about other alternatives if that's what the Board wants to do. If the Board isn't happy with either version I've put together, or I'd be glad to answer any questions about any of the versions I've put together for the Board.
Thoughts? Cheryl.
I have a second home on an island that does not have particularly good internet. This would not work for me, would it?
Probably. My guess is probably not.
Okay. So I guess I would be interested in what other alternatives there might be. I think that the inherent challenge with video conferencing is its accessibility. And I know that Bob travels a lot. You know, finding a location where you can access a video conferencing facility, I mean, I know when I was on the College Board 15 years ago and we started talking about this and, oh, we're all excited, we're all going to do interviews long distance, and we're going to have, you know, all this great stuff is going to happen, and the only challenge is that you don't have one of these in every 7-Eleven. I mean, they're not just someplace where you can go and pay five bucks and boom. So it feels like, it feels like it's a solution without really being solving what we need.
Bob?
Yeah, I mean, I think I was the only one that probably really brought this up, and I would envision that it wouldn't be every meeting, you know, that someone was gone. It'd be more for the controversial items, and we really don't handle those that often, thankfully. But also, if I had a second home that didn't have good internet, I would sell it. So I don't have major heartburn either way.
You want to buy it?
Yeah. I don't have any major heartburn either way because even for most of the meetings, if I was out of town, if it wasn't something that was really controversial, I probably wouldn't go to the effort. Because I also agree, if we did go, if we did go to the step of having a video conference, then you'd also have the thing, have something in there, like if you kicked off twice, you're out of there. You're off the island, you know, that kind of stuff. So, you know, whatever the Board wants to do, I don't have any real big heartburn either way. I just think, I don't know if we're there yet with the technology here at the county to be able to do it because I've seen it used before. Parks and Recs did it once, and it really didn't work out that good, but I just think something maybe in the future to start thinking about, so.
Sunny?
Well, I've thought about this a lot. We've, we've tried Skype interviews and all different kinds of things historically in this room, and it rarely even is fair. It's never good, and it's, it's certainly not excellent. You know, my next concern is, okay, that it would be one thing if one person's gone, what happens if two people are gone? Do, do we allow two different ways? We, and the long and the short of it is, we do not have the technology at Grand Travis County to make this work. You know, I'm pretty confident that I've, I've been here long enough that I've missed a few meetings, but I've made very sure if there was something that I wanted to make sure my two cents were weighed in on, that every Commissioner got a copy of those comments before I left. You know, I, you know, I'm personally, I would just as soon, at least at this point, because we don't have a better system, that if you want to vote and you want to participate, you're physically in the room. You know, I, we just, we just simply don't have the ability for the reasons, you know, Cheryl and Bob have already talked about. It doesn't work everywhere. It doesn't work if you're there, you know? I've, I've done it when I've been on vacation and I'm trying to pick up emails at truck stops and stuff so as that I can bid work, you know? It is what it is, but sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. But, but the, but the bottom line is, we don't have that many meetings, two meetings a month, 24 meetings a year, that are that controversial that if someone was missing, the other six of us couldn't manage to take a vote. You know, and I trust all the Commissioners to do their job, and, you know, you can be sure that if I'm not going to be here for a meeting and there's something I want an opinion on, you will get a copy of my notes before that.
Okay, else, Cory?
Well, I was just going to say, I think last year, or in the past two years, we've done a pretty decent job of, if people weren't going to be here, of moving some of the stuff around too. So, again, yeah, I think it's something maybe in the future, when we get our IT plan going, and maybe throw that in there too, to have that technology available, but.
Sorry, Chris.
I know. I know, you want to. I know. I know, you went through all that. I appreciate your efforts.
I recognize, it's like peeling an onion, right?
It is. I mean, because it's, it's nice to have it. You have to do video, I agree completely. You can't do phone, because you do want to see the person. But again, with the technology that we've used so far to try to do that, where I've seen, it just hasn't worked out. But we do, we work, do it at where I work, and it works pretty well, but...
We're set up, but you're doing it from offices that are set up to do that teleconference.
We have video conference rooms set up.
We do this with community mental health, but I'm not at home attending a community mental health meeting. I'm in the Traverse City office, because it's February, and the rest of the meeting is at the Houghton Lake office. And so, I can see that whole table, and that whole table can see everybody who's in Traverse City. So, it's a very good setup. And as I said, nobody's doing that from home or vacation or anything. I, so I think that the video conferencing is definitely not an option to us at this point. I understand if someone would feel like they might want to call in and participate. I think that's actually kind of disruptive, because you don't get called on, you might talk over somebody else, you might not hear everything. I think it's, you're missing eighty percent of what's going on in the room, and what's going on in the room that you're not hearing is a lot. You're missing the head nods and the, all kinds of things.
And not just ours, but the audience.
You're missing reaction from all kinds of people in the room, and if there's a presentation, you're not seeing that. And like I said, I just, I think it's fairly disruptive. I think that if you have, if we have something at a meeting, and you cannot make it to the meeting, and you really find it very important that what you wanted to say gets said on the microphones in public, you can send it to the clerk, and they can read it into the record. I have no problem with that at all, just make sure your voice is heard, or send us all your notes, so we know how you feel in general. So, that's my opinion on that, so.
I would move that we adopt version A of 11.6.
Support.
Okay, so moved by Commissioner Gorfulet, supported by Commissioner Wheelock. Any further discussion, Tom?
Yeah, I did attend a meeting of the Traverse School District across the street, in a building much older than this. And they had it set up, because one of the members had still some of their term to fill out, until they filled it with someone else, in other words, and they were going to college out of state. So, they set up a regular-sized monitor at that person's desk, and you could all see it. Everybody could see it from any point in the room, so it wasn't overhead like those monitors, but it was, it was large enough, it was bigger than these iPads. So, I'm not sure how they connected it, but if that had a video out, it could have been put on a larger screen, just with a cord. But I think that that was all separate from what we're trying to say. And so, like, if one of our members decided to go to college out of state, like that person did, you could make a special, I mean, you could change the rule for that when it happens, but for the regular day-to-day business, I don't think you should be able to vote unless you're here present. But they did make it, that was just another example of some kind of accommodation that was made for somebody who knew they weren't going to attend meetings for several meetings consecutively, because it was financially not possible or physically not possible. And they did make it so that the audience could see. And you could see back and forth, because there was a camera on the monitor, as most monitors have today. They have cameras on them, so. So, it didn't mean you had to buy a bunch of infrastructure, which might be what we were worried about. It was actually maybe a cord had to be purchased to attach a laptop to a bigger screen. So, I'd say if that ever happened, you know, we could make accommodations like the school board did, because then business could be conducted without an interruption. But on the day-to-day, I think you should be present. And when I was in the, in the public, before I got the seat, in December, I was at the podium when someone was on an iPad, and they were talking while I was at the podium. I've said that before, but, I mean, that kind of thing. We wouldn't have that if we had this rule that you had to vote here.
Anybody else? Anything wrong? No? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, there you have it. Okay, thank you. So, you got to be here if you want to vote. Okay. Okay, move on to new business. We have some ad hoc committees to interview for Planning Commission and Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, that's sort of where I misspoke earlier, because I didn't read down the line here.
Oh, you didn't see that on the, that's there, okay.
Yeah, and then the only other question I had is, is that really up to date as far as all the vacancies?
As far as I know, as far as I know right now, those are the only vacancies that we have. We have two vacancies on the Planning Commission, and we have currently three applicants.
Okay.
So, I would need three people, correct? Yes, three people to volunteer to interview those three candidates and choose two of them.
Did we advertise for these positions? Where was it advertised?
Advertised in the Record Eagle, I believe.
I read the Record Eagle every day, I didn't see the ads.
Where does Chris advertise for those?
She does advertise in the Record Eagle. I think for the Planning Commission, I believe those are reappointments. Is that correct?
There are two people who want to be reappointed, but, and there's two slots available, but there's a third applicant as well. So, that's why we have to choose two out of the three.
But my question was, where were there, was there an opportunity for people to apply?
Was that advertised, or did the third applicant just happen to know those were available?
It is the normal process to advertise them. I can double-check on the process that was undertaken. I think the action here is to appoint the ad hoc committee, and then if we would need to do an additional recruitment, we could advertise for those positions officially.
Because I know Parks and Rec has not been advertised yet, because we're not sure how many.
Oh, you're not sure how many?
We're not sure. We know of one. We're not sure, we might have two, not sure.
And it's going to be one ad hoc to decide both of these, both of these areas?
No, they're separate.
Okay.
They're separate. So, you might not have to do anything quite yet, but I do want to just have that in place, so that when we do get the applications in, it can be a fairly quick process.
So, you looking for volunteers to serve on the ad hoc committee, or are you making appointments?
I'm looking for volunteers for, start with the Planning Commission.
I'll volunteer.
Okay, so Planning would be Tom. Two more. Step right up. I'll do it. That's two.
Sure.
And Bob. Okay.
Calm down now.
I'll volunteer for Parks.
You'll volunteer for Parks, okay. For Parks, we have Ron.
I would volunteer for Parks as well.
And Cheryl. I am not going to volunteer for Parks.
I will do the Parks.
Okay. Okay, there we go. Two ad hoc committees. And they will, we'll have Chris Kramer let you know when all the applications are in, and you can make your times and make your appointments, and you'll be all set. Moving on to new business, B, resignation letter of county administrator. So, everybody got the resignation letter for Tom Menzel, as of December 31st of 2017? You don't never say anything, and then you pipe up. So, I thought I would take the opportunity to, what's that? I thought I'd take the opportunity to discuss a little bit the process, if anybody has ideas, thoughts, feelings about the process that we're going to have to go through to replace Tom. It will take probably all the rest of the year. So, what do you think, Sunny?
Well, I've been through this now four times, you know. I went back with some help from Chris Kramer and Gene Durinzi this morning. In 2001, when the county board was searching to replace Rothschild's, as most of you know, Ross was here thirty years, and then, and then we needed to replace the administrator. We hired a company out of Chicago called the Park Group. They're in Lake Bluff, Illinois. I actually left a voicemail for someone at that phone number this afternoon, but I did not get a call back. And I was going to try to follow up or email him, and I just didn't get around to that. But in January 31st of 2001, we contracted with Park Group for an executive search consult. And as my memory works, and it's, obviously, it's been a while, they actually sent people here, met with commissioners, met with departments, to get an idea of what we wanted. And they did a nationwide search. We had sixty-some applicants from one side of the country to the other. There were a few from Michigan, and they were all over. And then they narrowed the group down to, you know, I'm going to say half of that or less. And then those resumes were sent to the commissioners. And then we selected a group of, I believe it was seven, I think we originally invited nine to come in for physical interviews, and we actually ended up with seven people actually coming here. We did a, you know, a series of interviews with them. We did a little social gathering in the evening. We did Bratzenburgers at McDally Park, is what we did that particular time. And then the next day, we had some other, some other interviews. They met with some department heads, and the commissioners met again. And we basically went around the table, and it was really kind of interesting. In that particular case, you know, the nine commissioners at that time were all looking for the same thing, apparently. Because it came out that, we interviewed this group of people, everybody was asked to put their top three down. The same three names appeared on all nine papers the first ballot. The second ballot, we had selected Dennis Alloia. Dennis came from Seneca County in New York. So, you know, he wasn't someone that would have been on our radar by any sense of the word if we were trying to do this from a local, from a local perspective. I think it's essential that we do this with an outside firm, someone that this is what they do, and that we have them do the recruitment process. Obviously, we're going to make the selection, we're going to hire the county administrator, and hopefully, we will do that in a fashion that we come up with a county administrator that's going to be here for ten years. You know, I think the average county administrator is about eight years, you know, six to eight years nationwide. You know, it's not, it's not a lifelong job. They move around a lot. But part of that's because of the political nature of the boards by which they're employed by. You know, so, that would be my suggestion, and I know there's other companies out there. This just happens to be the one that I remembered having worked with before. So, that was what I pulled up, and, you know, we can, we can do anything you want to do, you know. I guess my biggest point about this is, we need to have someone outside do this for us. We do not have the expertise, and we want to make sure that we get the best candidate for this to happen. And, you know, we've done this where we've, you know, I know this guy, and this guy, and that guy, and they said this guy's good. You know, for different positions, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. But I think for a position that's this important, we need to go outside and get a company to do this for us. And I tried to find this afternoon, and I simply ran out of time to try to figure out what that cost was, but I could not find that today.
Any other thoughts?
Do you remember some of the other particulars about how long it took, you know, their process, and how many months it takes?
I'm going to say we were, we were six months.
Okay. From the date you hired the...
We hired them before we hired in the administrator.
Okay.
Maybe even a little longer than that.
Because one of the things Tom said, I think, was in his letter, is that he would be willing to overlap with that person, so that there'd be a period of time where they could talk to each other. So, I was thinking of a timeline, you know, and it has to do with that, right there, how many months it takes. And I figured that, you know, we shouldn't just say the end of the year, I'd say October, in case Tom decides to leave a little earlier, and to allow time for overlap, so.
My opinion would be sooner better than later, particularly due to the fact of the budget process and trying to get the new administrator to be familiar with the 2018 budget. You know, I, you know, when we hired David, we were in that situation. We had a, and really, when Tom was hired, same thing. We were down to the wire, we had to have a budget, we didn't have a budget prepared, because we went for a period of time without an administrator. And then, then they come in, and the first thing they got to do is try to crunch numbers and come up with a budget, and how real are those budgets anyway? So, I guess my, I would like to start this process very soon with a goal of having someone in-house by July, August at the latest.
Other thoughts, Bob?
Yeah, actually, I completely agree that we should probably do an outside firm to really expand the opportunities there for it, so. And also, I kind of agree with the timeframe. The one, the one good thing we have is the fact that we did hire a deputy administrator to help with that transition, too, so that will go a long ways towards easing some of the pains from the past. But I think it is important to get somebody in place either before the budget, or then you get them there, but there, you've got a lot of help with them, you know, for somebody to help them, so.
Cheryl?
Well, I would like to suggest that you appoint an ad hoc committee to take a look at search companies and come back to this board with a recommendation from the board of several candidates for a search company. Obviously, who we hired to do the search is going to go a long way toward who you're going to get. So, I, you know, if Sunny's had some positive experience and they still exist, that might be one to look at. But I'm sure that there are others as well.
Absolutely, there's other companies.
And so, you know, maybe have an ad hoc committee take a look, do a little research, maybe come back at the next board meeting with, you know, some information for the, for the board. I mean, I think this is a board decision. I think the board should hire this, this search agent, whomever it's going to be. And, you know, and I do know that these, we did this at the college, I hired a few presidents over there, too. You know, the heavy lifting is figuring out what you're looking for, and making sure that you have buy-in from all of the different entities that that person will be working with. So, that does take some time, to have all those meetings and see what they're looking for.
Yeah, when I thought of a timeline, I thought of that as well, you know, because from tonight to the ad hoc to making a decision, it's, weeks burn by real fast, so. In fact, you've done it before, you'd be a good person for that ad hoc.
I was going to say, they're looking for two more people to join, Cheryl.
Yeah.
Would you like to start that research for us, Cheryl?
Yeah, well, I think Sunny should do it as well.
Okay, so we have Sunny.
I'll volunteer as the third.
And Cheryl, and Tom. Okay?
And I would target, you know, our next regularly scheduled board meeting to make a...
Just two weeks.
Great. Find out what search firms are out there, and look at some reviews on them and see that, and then we can work on getting some RFPs out to them and ask them what they...
Yeah, and we don't have to recreate the wheel. There's RFPs out there that we can send out to these people, and they're certainly contactless.
So, did we use one for, we used one for Alloia, that's the one that you mentioned. Did we use one for Benda?
No.
No, we did Benda through MAC and their magazine.
Okay.
They just put a classified ad in, looking for a county administrator in the MAC magazine and some of the county newspapers.
So, that was just a Michigan-wide search, then?
And then, what were the particulars when we hired Tom, then? Did we do the same thing through the magazine again?
I think it was the same thing.
They advertised, it was through...
MML. MML, they used MML, I believe, for...
To get resumes and...
We had mostly Michigan applicants, we did have a few out-of-state applicants. Yeah, we did.
Quality of the applicants wasn't great.
But then we got them down to a certain point, and we only had one interview, so.
Well, that's why we need to...
I think it should be a nationwide search, yes.
You know, I mean, unfortunately, the nature of jobs these days are that a lot of people apply for stuff, and then they change their minds before they ever get to the finish line.
So, we need a big pool to choose from, and somebody at this level, they don't turn on a dime, either. They don't leave and uproot possibly a family and everything in two weeks, to start with us, so.
If you interview them during Cherry Festival, you got a good shot of keeping them.
Well, we definitely need to get them up here in the summer and woo somebody a little bit. You don't want them to come up now.
Well, it's going to take us, it's probably going to take us at least two to three months before we have a search committee that's actually going to go out and start putting names to a list, because they're going to have to evaluate what we want first. And that's absolutely critical. If everyone that's involved isn't willing to have discussions about what their goals and objectives are, you know, and what they're looking for in an administrator, we're...
We need a firm that's willing to come here and ask us the right questions, to get out of us exactly.
They know what questions to ask.
They know what questions to ask. Where we might not think of everything upfront, they would be able to sit.
It's a very important decision.
It is, and it's the one big decision that is solely in our court here.
Can we get a copy of some of the materials that were used in the past? I mean, some of the forms and the job description and... I mean, some of the forms and the job description and-
I was, I was told that there are binders or packages of papers that for each of these searches that-
I'm not familiar with them, but we'll, we'll-
They're, they're in this building.
I think, I would think the search, whatever search agency you use too, would have a lot of information towards that, so I-
That's their job.
I think for us mostly, it'd probably just figure out what, what qualities we want to use and who do we want. I think they would be able to figure out the rest of that, so.
So the first step is to find out what qualities we want in a search firm. We'll go with that. Can the three of you can figure that out?
Tom and Cheryl and I'll get together and try to figure that out.
Okay. All right, you have your mission. Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to, uh, second public comment. Anybody out there have anything else to say?
Chickens.
At all? There's a huge crowd, if any, no.
I just have to add, cause I, I didn't notice it till now. Why did we have the 911 presentation after the second public comment? And, cause normally, normally we would have had that up above, but-
That's, that's that report that different departments are gonna-
It's that five-minute special report, so it's not an in-depth discussion or anything. They're gonna present their,
They're the first.
They're gonna present their five minutes of their, yeah, and Cheryl wanted to keep it to five minutes, so we're gonna have it in the comments section. She's timing you. So, if there's no second public comment, uh, then we will go on to department reports. Presentation of the 911 Annual Report, 2016, Mr. Torrey.
Hello there. Jason Torrey, 911 Director.
Yes.
And I have here with me tonight is Deputy Director Leah Hornecheck. For those of you who do not know her, she was appointed to that position in February of 2016. Um, I only have five minutes, so I'll go as quickly as I can, cause I have a lot to say generally. But I did provide to you, and in your packet is the 911 report for 2016. Uh, our department has historically not provided a report, um, so this is something new for us, so I thought I'd start it off with some really basic information, but it's 15 pages long and hopefully you were able to take a review of it and get something out of it, some benefit. Um, I would like to highlight a few things that I think are really important for you to know and understand. Um, and that is going to page seven. Skip through a lot of the organizational structure and who we serve. You're pretty familiar with those folks. Uh, the 2016 statistical information. Uh, the total phone transaction, 128,000. That's down roughly from 140,000 in 2015 and some of our customary numbers that we were able to acquire from years before. And we contribute that directly to our Facebook, our social media outreach, as well as our ability to update our audit system to let citizens that call our non-emergency number go in different directions and things of that nature. That has helped our department extremely. Uh, the 911 calls per service or per class, per class of service, rather. If you notice there, you'll see wireless phase one and two. They account for roughly 76% of our total call volume. That's all cellular calls. So a lot of our call volume is based off of cellular devices, which we don't get the accurate location information that we could need and desire from, uh, similar products that you get on a wireline. Uh, and then if, one interesting note here is the coin phone. We actually got four calls from a pay phone.
I was gonna ask, where was that?
I don't know. I was gonna ask the same thing.
Okay.
Grand Traverse, so they are still out there. At, in the bottom segment here, you see calls related, uh, other calls, statistics, our busiest month of the year is obviously July. You probably could have guessed with our least busy being March. Uh, moving on to the statistics on the next page, um, I think it's really important to know-
Go ahead. Piece right there that always frustrates me, 5,369 cellular call hangups.
Yeah, I mean, I could touch on that real quick. For those of you that don't know what we consider a cellular 911 hangup call is a cellular device that calls us. Either they don't wait for us to pick up the phone, or it's generally, most likely 80% of the time, a butt dial situation where they have it in their pocket or they sit on it. And so they don't answer, and so what does that do? We have to continue to call back. We use a chat message through Smart 911, try and establish a communication with them. And last but not least is we have to send law enforcement to go investigate that situation. So it's a real, it's a big waste of resources because 99.8% of the time, there's not a problem there.
What are we doing to address that?
That's a good question. Nothing. I mean, nothing in terms of, there's not, we've, we've narrowed this down to the most efficient way we can to respond to those, which is to continue to, to try and establish contact, narrow down a location. And we're obligated because it could be an emergency to send 911-
But what I'm saying is it sounds like it's an education piece that people need to realize that there's a cost to this.
Okay, so we do do that.
An education piece?
Yes, ma'am. We're constantly trying to, uh, to improve our outreach to the community, to enforce and reinforce the fact that we have these issues out there and that the community can't help us.
Oh, I'm, I'm not criticizing you at all. I'm just saying, I think that this is some, this is an opportunity for us.
Yeah.
Look what butt calls cost.
I was one of those.
I bet you were.
Twenty, twenty, twenty percent of all of our 911 calls per year are hangup calls.
Sure.
Eighty percent of those are cellular hangup calls.
And people don't even realize, so we have, we need to put a number on that number, a dollar number on that number. And that's a public service announcement in the making.
I will say that, cause it did happen to me twice, two days in a row.
So I see you're- Ten percent of the problem.
I was coming through the drive-through McDonald's. I think it was something with that, but, so they called me back the second day and basically, you know, I apologized, but then I went in and checked what settings that I have on my phone and that finally fixed it. So apparently I had hit something so that, you know-
They wanted to know if you had a stroke or something.
I guess, yeah. So, but it does, the process does work.
Right, and I, let me just really quickly emphasize the fact that the more and more devices and applications that are able to make connections with 911 is only gonna increase that problem going forward. That's all the next generation 911 stuff where you can text, you can send pictures, you can send video, you can use applications of your iPad to establish a conversation with 911. That's what we're faced with going forward.
So is there a way to text those numbers back and say, are you okay?
We have a chat feature through Smart 911 that allows us to, to establish a one-way communication with them. So they can't directly communicate with us as of right now, but we are able to communicate out to them. And once you establish that connection, you can have a conversation. And so we use that as a tool and it has helped significantly to decrease the number of these calls. And so it'll be interesting over time to see how they decrease from here because people will answer that text message a lot more often than they will that phone call coming back.
Absolutely. Nobody under 35 answers a telephone.
Right.
Well, and when it, because it comes through the SIM tracks, it all comes up and it just comes up all zeros.
Right, and we tried to address where we have the 10-digit on there so that our phone number comes up, 922-4550. Um, so that people get used to seeing it that regularly butt dial us. Uh, but we're, we're trying everything we can to reduce the number of these and create a more effective method of responding.
Well, my point was it's, it's a very significant problem.
I appreciate you pointing that out.
You know, we need to publicly talk about it in order to try to figure out some way to address it.
Right.
And, and Jason's right, you know, kids in today's world don't answer the phone. They tech, do everything by text. Employees come in and talk off.
My five minutes is almost up, I feel.
No, yeah, well, don't worry.
We've asked a lot of questions.
We've given you special discussion.
All right, setting a precedent here, just saying. All right, continuing on in the report, um, you'll notice that 99.9% of our call answer statistics are within the National Emergency Number Association guidelines. So we're very satisfied with the, the response level to answering the phone. That's a majority of our job. Uh, you can see in the transactions per month on the next page with the phone transactions of the 911 call volume. Again, it's just showing you the trends from month to month. Our busiest month is July and once again, the least busy is March. Uh, we handled 128,000, like I said, 128,000 total phone transactions and then over 40,000 911 calls. Um, continuing on to page 10, uh, calls for service per agency. Just give you a breakdown of, of what our distribution looks like based on actual incidents and incident numbers generated. Uh, if you see the 20% for dispatch, we take a number for every time we have to assist a citizen with a call transfer to another agency and/or we spend a lot of time with that person to develop an outcome that they're satisfied with. That doesn't necessarily go out to law enforcement, fire, or EMS. And then if you flip back to page 12, uh, we threw in some, um, interesting information on the training that our dispatchers are required to have and that they do go through. You notice 40-hour basic dispatch school, 40-hour advanced dispatch school. There's a whole list of other training, um, that they have in addition to that on top of the over 1,000 hours of on-the-job training just before they're independent and able to work at a position.
So they gotta must work almost half a year before they can-
Yeah, the probationary status is a year and the program for the training is four to six months. And sometimes it goes beyond that, well into eight or 10 months before they're independent. It's a very difficult, multi-tasked, tasking skillset.
That's a, that's a tough job. I mean, it's really stressful.
It's a really tough job.
You gotta get the right people and unfortunately, you probably do get a lot that decide they can't handle it, which is fine. I mean, you know, not everybody can do everything.
Right.
How many full and part-time employees?
We have, uh, staff, total staff of 21, so we have 16, including supervisors and dispatchers, one call taker, myself and Leah. And then we have a databases coordinator and an administrative supervisor position.
Everybody full-time?
Everybody's full-time. Uh, moving on here to, um, a couple of last pages, we addressed Smart 911, a rate facility. I think this is extremely important. If you're not familiar with Smart 911, it's where you can set up a personal profile that provides information to the dispatcher during a 911 event only. Two instances, Mr. Hoffman, if you recall, was saved from a house fire in Grand Traverse County specifically because his wife built him a personal profile. Um, that man would have died in that building if it wasn't for that. We have a participation rate of about 15 to 18%, which compared to other counties in the state and in the nation is very, very successful. We have about 12,000 citizens currently protected by a safety profile.
Okay, just gonna jump in here, cause like, I have had no idea that this even existed. So this is another opportunity for public service announcement, um, blowing your horn, um, showing why we have this service available to the community.
See, and then we need to target something that we, we're missing something somewhere, cause we do a lot of that. And if we missed you, that means we missed others. And so we're gonna take an opportunity to go readdress that.
I'm gonna tell you, you missed a lot if you missed me. Cause I read all the time. I mean, I, you know, I'm paying attention, so I never heard of it before.
Okay. Sign up tonight, soon as you get home.
One thing I will say is Jason does a fabulous job with his Facebook things.
That's, all the credit goes to Leah.
Her lawyer does, you know, somebody, Leah does it.
I wake up every morning and check what is going on with 911.
Everybody in the world tells me about the, the, the little quirk things that they hear on, uh, the 911 Facebook stuff.
We did start that with the intention of making it more human. And right, right out of the gate, we never gave it a very strict structure. We wanted people to relate to what we were saying on a level that they understood. And that catapulted us into 42 or 41,000 likes that we have today. And probably one of the most successful social media pages for all of public safety in the whole United States, so we're extremely proud of it.
So you have to be on Facebook to do this?
Pardon me?
You have to be on Facebook to do this?
This is, that's what I'm specifically referring to.
Not Smart 911, but for the Facebook stuff. Cause there was like, I think there was a post last night that there was seven accidents at one time. You know, one of them's a half a mile from my house.
And they don't just leave them. I, I saw one like last night that said, this is the updated update on the update. And I'm like, thank you.
It's not there, obviously, it's not there, it's not highest on the priority list, but the supervisors are responsible for trying to update that when the workload permits. And they do a really, really good job. And when it's really, really funny, it's generally her that has something to do with it.
When Matt Brayton's cow was in the window well, I'd have to have been to chew his feet.
So yes, our social media, our Smart 911, um, the new product, the rate facility, which allows businesses and institutions to build, um, geo fences around their complexes and actually assign footprints and emergency contact information and, um, give all sorts of different things that they would like us to have during a 911 event or during an emergency.
So is that like a, a dial-out then to say NMC or something? Is it, is it something similar to that? If you had a shooter on campus type thing at colleges?
So the idea would be is, let's take, that's a good example. NMC gets shooter on campus at East Hall or whatever. If it's inside their geo fence, if they built a facility profile, it'd populate the campus. And any, and all the information that they gave on their facility or the campus itself, giving building locations, names of buildings, they can, I mean, it's limitless as far as what they can provide to us or provide to their profile. That would be a benefit to us and to first responders. So we're really gonna work on pushing this hard. We don't have a lot of participation yet. It's relatively new. But we do believe it's gonna be the one place that they can go to give us all the information they always want us to have, but never seem to be able to get to us, right? So we're really looking forward to that.
So this is like the tech version of the little red sticker you put in your windows, save my dog, you know?
There you go.
So.
A new and improved way that, and they maintain it and they make sure it's updated. Um, and it's really gonna be probably the way we wanna do business going forward.
So if, like if I wanted to do my profile on Smart 911, I would be able to put in there where in my house my children sleep or I have a cat or things like that.
Your medications, your pet, you can get that, you can get that detailed, or you can put just the basic information. Here's my name, here's my address, here's my emergency contacts. And what you're referring to is going back to the personal profile. Why that is so important, even if all you have, a lot of people just have a cell phone. That cell phone dials 911, we don't know who that person is. We don't know where they actually live. All we knew, know is a general location of the phone itself. So if people with just a cell phone would register just their name and their address and attach it to that phone number, we would at least know who it belongs to at a bare minimum. And that's all the information that we used to get when you used to call off a wireline phone.
Health, health conditions, medications, that'd be good stuff.
It's got, it's actually a wonderful application.
Well, and the emergency contact piece, it becomes a, becomes a huge thing, you know. I, I've made so many ambulance calls and you get there and the person's incoherent or you can't help you and you're struggling trying to figure out who you're supposed to even call.
Interesting.
Right. We could talk about this all day long. I had five minutes.
No, it's fine.
Have you, have you set up booths like at the Cherry Festival or the fair to try to get people to sign up for the Smart 911 or?
Yeah, we participate in all the public safety fairs, the-
She's dying to go there.
Low Safety Days, Metro Fire, the MSP Homeland Security, uh, we've been to Home Depot, Gronk, Kingsley, the Michigan Township Association meetings, Kiwanis Club, the Golden Kiwanis Club. Right, um, so we're actively, and we're, we're seeking out these events. We wanna be there. We wanna talk about this cause we think it's really, really important.
Okay, we want you at Santa. I'll give you a call.
Okay.
I know, she's, she's come to Consumers Energy and-
What, Consumers Energy, we've been there. We've been there. And, uh, we're looking for opportunities. So if, in your travels during your meetings, if you see an opportunity that they could benefit from a presentation, please get in touch with us.
And we have a presence on the county's website too. You know, 911 has a separate one, but the county has one. We have a presence. I'm not quite sure the link works as well as it maybe should and we would work on that at some point, but.
Well, let's hope so. If it's not, I'm gonna look into that. Um, and to round out the, the report, it's just a kind of recap of what we did in 2016 with the deployment of the radio systems, the upgraded next-gen 911 telephone system, uh, the deployment of 800 megahertz paging for all of first responders in the county. Um, and we're looking towards, coming into this quarter in 2017, it's finishing off our next-gen transition, which is getting all the telephone companies moved over to an IP-based network where then we can start exploring our text and 911 solutions and things of that nature that are gonna increase the effectiveness of anybody who has to call or wants to get in touch with 911. See, now it's not a call anymore, it's a contact. They're calling, they're texting, they're gonna be able to send stuff to us, data tra, I mean, it's gonna be really complex going forward, so we'll have to keep on top of it. Um, but it's, it's new and improved stuff and we're looking forward to it.
It's been a good example of what a millage will do as far as helping with getting infrastructure that we weren't able to do before. You know, there's no way you could have got all those capital improvements.
Uh, it's a direct result from the surcharge and that increase that was geared towards providing those technology upgrades. We're doing everything we said we were gonna do with them. They're gonna provide for a better level of service. Um, and without it, we'd, we'd be in pretty rough shape, so we're super excited to have that support.
You got three years left on this?
Uh, it goes through 2021.
Tom?
Are there areas in the county that have, uh, poor cellphone service, poor mobile service that is a concern that could be changed in the future?
Uh, poor cellphone? Is that what you said?
Yeah, mobile service, you know, where the, where they're kind of in an area that doesn't have a good coverage and the phones don't work so well.
Uh, I don't know. I mean, there's, there's a couple of things going on with that. I know that there's other carriers coming into the area. They're trying to expand their footprints. I also know that the, um, the private sector is trying to, uh, get involved with the FirstNet project, which is a public- which is a public safety broadband network. And to work together to expand the footprint for both the commercial side and the public safety side. Now, that's gonna be a years-long transition and process. But I do believe they're about to award that bid to a vendor within the next month or so. I can't answer it directly, but I know there's initiatives out there to make that happen.
There are, like if you went out to Lelandot County, you'd find weak areas.
Right.
If you're used to getting good service here in, in the city.
Right. I mean, it's, you're gonna find out with any, especially the topography rate is gonna dictate how well things happen. But let me, you bring up a good point, um, about, uh, limited voice communication. The text to 911, there's three major components, why that's beneficial. Deaf and hard of hearing community, right? Because they can't communicate. They use those devices all the time to make that connection. Victims of domestic violence. We get it all the time. I can, I can reassure you that there are situations regularly that occur where people don't want to or cannot call us, so they can text. And if you notice in your packet there on the report, Corey Ellis was issued a Smart Save Award. It's because he used the chat feature, the one-way connection through Smart 911, to get ahold of a woman who tried to get ahold of us but had to disconnect. But he was able to communicate with her via chat. And when law enforcement got there, they did realize that she was being held captive against her will. And who knows how that situation, situation would've turned out. But the data on the text to 911, right, you can text more reliably than you can call. So they found too, that if you're unable to make a voice call, but you might have just enough data coverage to get that text message through, that that's proved to be beneficial as well.
In a poor service area, texting is gonna work easier.
Correct.
That's good to know.
I used way over my time.
It's okay.
Are there any other questions? That's.
Very, very informative. Thank you very much. And I think this kinda highlights how useful this could be to every other meeting. We're, we'll have two here in February because we didn't do one in January. But if at the second meeting of every month, it's good and informative stuff.
Certainly the example where Grand Travers County's way out in front of the average. We, you know, we really truly are, you know? And we struggle with, you know, with, with some of the little quirks that we have trouble with. But at the same time, we still do a better job than, than many, many, many areas. Not just locally, but throughout the state, throughout the country. Where we should be very proud of our, of our services here.
On that, not only that, but the staff, the last plug I wanna put in is for them, because they do a tremendous job. They come in and deal with these high-stress situations every day. We have, um, tenured people there. I think the least senior, we have one vacancy, right? But aside from that, we're working on folks that have a minimum of three to four years doing the work. So they're committed, they're dedicated, um, and they do a great job. And they're complimented all the time by the folks at the 911 Board that make the same statements. In fact, that they're pleased with the service that we do provide.
Well, thank you for your good work.
I just, we need to figure out some way to get these numbers out there. All the, the numbers, the stats that you gave us too, make sure that gets out somewhere to some site that they, everybody can see, because the amount of calls you take is just mind-boggling, you know? A year for a small town, I know, small town, like Traverse City, but it is, it's pretty impressive.
Well, and this kind of, the, the stuff that they're doing that people don't know could help them. You know, we talked at our strategic planning session about maybe doing a, a countywide annual or semi-annual newsletter. And this is the kind of stuff that needs to be in there. Did you know, you know, this is, this could save your life, this could save your family's life, whatever. And people don't, I'm, I'm not kidding you, people don't know this.
I have no doubt. And that's why I said, please, throw those opportunities our way. We're more than happy to attend and communicate that message.
We'll do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jason.
I did put on here a strategic planning meeting update. I wanted to make sure, just see what people thought about how it went on Saturday for us. Any comments, thoughts?
I thought it was very good, actually. I thought we got a lot accomplished in that short amount of time. Every time I've been in a strategic planning session, no matter where it is, you always feel like you need another two or three meetings. But I thought we got a lot accomplished and I know we had the whip with us to try to get stuff going quickly. And I agree with that too, you know? I, I think that's where a lot of that falls short is in the, the application of it. But I thought it was very good, actually.
I thought most of the things we could accomplish within a much shorter period of time than, than the, you know, description of that meeting was gonna be, cause it, uh, it said over the next two years, things that we would wanna do over the next two years. And I can't imagine anything that we talked about that couldn't be done in six to nine months on the long side, really. So.
A lot of it was already in motion.
Yeah. But I thought it was worthwhile.
Anybody else?
Well, despite the fact that I was feverish and ill, um, I.
You said you didn't have a fever.
I enjoyed the opportunity to hang out with you all and get to know you better. So I think that that's one of the, one of the benefits of engaging in that kind of an exercise, because, um, it's easier to work with people when you kinda know who they are and know what to expect from each other. So that was valuable.
Good. Um, Jen had done, um, sort of a summary for me. I did skim over it. I'm sorry, I didn't get to read it word for word. Um, but it, it looks good. If, I'm wondering if, if you could send it to everybody?
Absolutely.
Just, and if you have comments, she kinda summarized everything from all those boards that we had done. If you have any comments, direct them directly at Jen, not back and forth or anything. But if you have any comments on it, if you see there's something we missed or that's not stated exactly correctly, let Jen know. Um, and you'll send that out to everybody. Thank you very much.
Yeah, the timeline that was on the back that looked like this, uh, I thought that was very helpful. And especially the months which they say we should be starting on the budget. I'd like to stick to that. Cause I think that's, uh, that's, that's pretty normal. There's nothing unusual about it. But the, we would start early, as early as, uh, as May, which, you know, when we were talking earlier, we talked about, uh, you know, when we would like to see the new administrator come in. Well, it's not gonna be that early. So whenever they come in after May, we're gonna be in the midst of a, the beginning of the budget process, somewhere in the middle, towards the end.
And they started that last year. I mean, they, they did the discussion with the department heads and everything in, what, May and June anyway. It was just the, the anomaly towards the end that I, I know won't happen this year, but they did start that process. It's kind of a normal process for them to start it in that timeframe, so. But, um, also thank everyone that set all that up and kept the food and everything else. It was, it was good, so.
Jen, were you gonna say something?
I was just gonna, I think Dr. Johnson clarified that the, the budget process starts with the departments in May and June, and then it comes back to the board later in the year. So I just don't want, uh, in the expectation that you would see a budget in May.
It's behind the scenes at that point.
Okay.
Okay. Any notices? I know next week, on Wednesday, we have our, a, a planning session about Commission on Aging. So hopefully we'll get lots of good information, um, on that. Um, I think it was pretty clear in the strategic planning session that there's gonna have to be sooner rather than later, a discussion on the, the pension and what we're asking the employees, certain employees to contribute. Do we want that to be an agenda item or a study, a full-on study session? Cheryl, shake your head.
My suggestion was that we schedule a pension study session as our next, um, as our next study session.
So the second one in February, we'll use that one for that?
Well, um, what would the date of that be?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-second.
I'm not here.
We can do it, we can do it the next one then if you want. I, I, I guess I had the impression of, of what you're talking about. I thought that would be sooner rather than later.
The, the pension?
With the, the change in the percentage.
Yes.
Because of the unions have, have seemed to have agreed, so I guess.
There's a critical timing thing.
I think for that part, I think we could, we could handle a regular meeting.
That part we probably could. I, I was talking about the pension solution.
Pension solution, I think maybe can be maybe the first study session in March.
Okay.
Can we do that?
That would be March 8th.
Yeah. Okay. Cause that is a lot of information and that, that, a lot of that will come from the pension board. That gives the pension board one meeting more to kinda come up with.
I would, I would like to ask for both the Commission on Aging and the Pension Study Session that we, that we don't just get what we've already gotten, or that we don't just expand on what we've already gotten. I would, you know, I'm coming in new here, so I don't have the benefit of history. I would like to look at options that haven't been looked at. I would like to look at, um, uh, you know, COA, obviously, I'm, I'm interested to know how we got to where the administration is at from where we were, from, you know, the COA. But with regard to the pension, um, I mean, I would like to look at bonding. I would like to look at, uh, you know, the, obviously, the administration is, is real interested in this, uh, irrevocable account. And I want, you know, I want some pros and cons on that. I mean, we have a, we have a bond council. I mean, perhaps that, that person should be a part of that study session and get some, get some insight from that person. I mean, I wanna walk out of that meeting with a pretty clear idea on if we do A, this happens. If we do B, this happens. If we do C, this happens. And how quickly can we do that? Because I want to check that box on that pension, um, sooner rather than later. And I, and I know there's, you know, I've seen the memos and I've, I've, I've read Tom's update for the, this meeting. And, you know, we're waiting on this and we're waiting on that. We're always going to be waiting for something, okay? Every decision we make can, can hinge on something else happening. We have to make a decision. And, and I want us to do that. I think we all wanna do that. We're gonna have too many other things to deal with this year to let that hang over our heads. And our, our employers and the county deserve a resolution on that issue. So, um, yeah, March 8th.
March 8th for the, for the, the pension. And I think between now and next Wednesday and, and March 8th, it's important for all the commissioners to get your questions together, get them to the administration, tell them what you wanna know, and they'll get it all together.
Unfortunately, I don't know what I don't know.
Well, that's true. We have to start somewhere.
When you have a presentation, then you go, wow, I didn't, you know, I need to know all this other stuff. So yeah, it's, it is difficult.
It is.
I mean, it's tough for us that have been here for a few years. Sunny knows it all. She's been here forever.
True.
For you two that are fresh on here, it is a steep learning curve. But do we want to, and I'll just throw this out to everybody, you know, now we have a pension board, do we want them to be there at their study session?
Well, two of us are here all the time anyway.
I, I, or do you wanna just offer, I mean, let them know we're having a, a study session on it and they can come, I guess?
We let the pension board know that we need to come up with some stuff.
Cause they may have some insight too.
Well, I did attend one of their meetings when I was actually running for office, so, um, I, I, I got to hear that. And I think those are open to the public, so.
They are.
So I think, um, we were just having a side conversation that any additional time, because it is complicated, because the irrevocable trust does require some, some research and some review, because it hasn't been done here in the state of Michigan, that in order to involve the Pension Advisory Board, perhaps, you know, I mean, we'll get the information as quickly as possible. Maybe we can get you a summary of where we are, some of the information that's already been gathered. And then also outline some of the questions that we're still working on. And we can do that in, in terms of a memo, uh, just to, to give some background information. But in terms of having everything resolved by March 8th, uh, that would be an extremely aggressive timeline that I don't believe we'd be able to meet.
I'm, I'm not asking that you have everything resolved. I'm asking that you present the options.
We can certainly give you a summary of.
Irrevocable trust, options are.
Of what we're working on right now.
Doing MERS out this far, doing MERS out this far, et cetera.
Some of that, and we're actually waiting, you know, it is a waiting game. And we're relying on other experts for information, you know, regarding actuarial valuations in order to understand the impact of the potential options. Uh, I think what we could do is lay out what those options are, the pros and cons that we've identified, and then some of the remaining questions. Um, and that might be a way to kinda structure that, so that you have the information and know then what we're still looking at.
Okay. And include in that the options that you have already rejected.
Certainly.
Okay. So we'll start there.
Yeah, another way of asking whether that date works for you is, is that maybe it'd be a good date, because you'll get more input and that'll help you make, you know, your, your final plan somehow. You know, the study session will help you, you know?
We would make a recommendation, absolutely, to the board. And then your impact, your feedback, you know, during that study session would be, you know, imperative to.
I think as much back and forth as we have is good.
So when is the next pension board meeting?
Next Thursday.
Really? Yes. Not, the next one after that, isn't it?
Next week?
Uh, February, or.
Not this, not tomorrow, Thursday, the one after.
February 9th.
Okay.
At what time?
4:30.
It's 4:30 in the afternoon.
Do you know, do you know what you're gonna be doing specifically, or?
Uh, we have not yet said it.
Agenda? Oh, okay.
Probably pension stuff.
That's probably.
Generally is.
Well, back, back to the first meeting, we had the organizational meeting. I, I, I asked, and I've studied this idea since, to have several choices. But in reality, you know, if I, if you had three choices on ways to solve the pension problem, you know, one, one of those choices, or two of them could be put together, could be some kind of a combination of two, two ways to do it. So you, you solve part of the problem with one of the three or so ways, and then you solve part of the problem with another one. So some kind of combination is, is also a good way to look at it. And then, uh, on the, uh, on the COA, because that's coming up next week, there's a week. The meeting will start at 5:30, the same time as our regular meetings start, just so everybody knows. And, and because I hadn't, I've been to a lot of meetings and I've studied things, major issues for, uh, last 10 years maybe. But, uh, I would like to go back and be able to read something about why we would, why we would do anything that sounds at all like privatization, you know, when we may not have had any problem. And then, you know, what was the, the document that we used when we were, uh, proposing the, uh, the millage? And what, what was our reason for the millage? You know, what, what did we tell the public? And I could go back and maybe find that, but, but, but maybe you could find it quicker.
Looking for the valid language of the intent of the dedicated.
Yeah, what was the millage gonna accomplish?
What did we tell, what did we tell the public we were going to use the money for?
That's right. Because we probably didn't tell them what we're doing now, I'm guessing. But, but I don't know. And the, you know, the privatization thing is really, no, that's, that's like a philosophy, really, whether you want to, you know, take certain parts of the county government and, and have them operated privately. But, but it's surely important. And this maybe isn't specifically about that when we meet our, for our study session. But, but it does raise the questions, cause people have asked me. And I'd just like a little bit of background on those two things, because, uh, because I wanna come up with the best answer possible. And, uh, oh, the third one was, uh, we must have a policy, because I know there was an exception made in this case, uh, about bidding. And, you know, what are the, what are the dollar thresholds, or what are the reasons, you know, why we ask people to, uh, to make bids or put out a, a request for proposals? Cause in this case, we did something like that, but we didn't exactly do that, I understand. And that came up at the last meeting. And when Tom was here, uh, I remember I might've asked something, but I know for sure that, uh, that Dan Lathrop did. You know, and if we found out after that, that we didn't put it out for bid. So that was definitely curiosity on my part. So, so normally, you know, what do we do? Cause I know we have a policy of some kind. And I trust that it's being done, you know, most of the time. But, but those three things in particular would, uh, would really bring me up to speed historically on, uh, on what this is all about. It's not exactly, you know, what we're gonna talk about or the reason for the study session, but it's the background of it.
Sounds good. Be happy to get that information.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I think as far as the, there are two separate issues. I think that we're looking at with the pension is, is what, what's available as, as a, a whole solution to the pension, whether it's a lot of different things that we're gonna do separately is the percentage of, that, that we are getting from certain employees. And I do think that if there's no objection, we'll have that, a discussion on that, specific one point, um, on the 15th, if that's okay.
Yeah, cause that.
That, that needs to be on there.
The, the whole pension issue is a lot more in-depth.
Have very graciously asked us to put that on an agenda. They have things to say, and, and, and I think that it's important. Sooner, that's, that part of it, sooner rather than later. So we'll have that on in two weeks.
And what I would recommend, Tom, is when you have some stuff like that, it may be easier if you can send that to them in writing too, via email, to give them time to, to get it together. But I'm just as bad about that too, so, cause I always think about it at the meeting.
In the hallway, by the way.
If we can give them time ahead to, to at least try to put some of that.
I was actually researching some of it today, and I didn't wanna wait till tomorrow when we'd have this opportunity just to look right at you.
Fair enough. Anybody else in notices?
I have one comment. Uh, I wanna acknowledge and, and, you know, Tom's not here tonight. But I, from my perspective, I absolutely appreciate the administrator activity reports that we've gotten the last two weeks. Because they, you know, this is information that I've asked for and it's kinda, you know, difference in the way we percept what we're asking for, but.